Okay, it is officially six thirty-four. We're gonna call the Landale City Council meeting to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Osborne.
Here.
Councilmember Soares.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
All present.
Okay, next we're gonna have our ceremonial portion. We're gonna have our flags salute. I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Tim, I was born to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and I'm gonna ask Doris Hoffman, Ms. Doris Hoffman, to lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand. Place your right hand across your heart. Do any hats. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Thank you. Let's bow our hair in reverence, please. Our Father in heaven, as we just said, the pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the flag. Father, we thank thee that we live in a great country and we have the freedom of speech and we can pledge our allegiance to a flag and our loyalty to our government officials. We thank thee, Father, for our local officials and for what they stand for and as they try to lead our city. We thank thee, Father, for our officials that represent us in other parts of government. Keep your hand on them and guide and give them wisdom, Father, for what they have to put up with. And then, Father, lastly, we would ask you to guide and protect all of those that serve us from our police department, our fire department, and all of our military. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Welcome, everyone. Okay, we got a couple of presentations tonight. As you may notice, we got a couple of young folks that's visiting with us tonight. We wanna honor a few young folks here in the city of Landale who has participated in our parade committee, our Youth Day Parade Committee art contest. And they're here and I'll explain a little bit. As you can see on the screen, we have some artwork. We'll kinda explain that to you a little bit. In late twenty eighteen, the Youth Day Parade Committee determined that they would like to seek a new pirate image to be used on the promotional materials for the twenty nineteen Pirate Day Parade, which is coming up. Seventy-five students from Jane Addams as well as Will Rogers Middle School participated in the arts contest during the winter break. In January twenty nineteen, the Parade Committee reviewed about seventy-five submissions and selected three images as the finalists for the contest and the subsequent winners. And they're joining with us tonight. We have the three winners tonight. The third place winner, I'm gonna have him to put it on the screen, is Eric Tren. He's from Roger Middle School. Eric, where are you, Eric? Wave your hands, Eric. That's Eric? And that's your image, correct? Love it, love it. Okay, and our second place winner is Angie Aragon Breeze. Where is Angie? Angie, wave your hand. Let's show Angie.
Purple one.
The purple one. The purple one. There we go. All right, we like the octopus. Okay. And our first place winner would be Ashlyn Wells from Jane Addams Middle School. Ashlyn? Let's show Ashlyn's again. There you go. And so you'll see this image on a lot of our promotional materials that's gonna be used to promote the parade that's coming up in this April. And we hope that everyone can join us. Now, in addition to the three finalists, I want you to know that the committee did select this artwork and that Ashley, she would also, and her family, is gonna be our grand marshal for the two thousand nineteen parade. How about that? And that parade is gonna be held on April the twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, and she'll be joined with her family. And we just wanna show our congratulations to the three participants. We have a certificate for all three of the participants, and we'll come down and present. You guys may wanna take a picture with us? Is that all right? No, I got, I didn't hear Eric. Did Eric? Is it all right with you, Eric? You okay with that? All right, all right. Okay, so we'll take a picture with our three finalists. Come on.
Last chance, make a speech.
Okay, they wanna do a speech.
No, they said.
Congratulations.
I've known Grandma. I've known Jan for forty years.
You know how to come out, you know?
Congratulations once again.
Good job, guys.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to acknowledge a couple Youth Day Parade Committee members that are here tonight. Kathy Wagner is here tonight. Kathy, give us a wave. Also, one of our main drivers on the Youth Day Parade Committee for the past several years is Ms. Diana Villarreal. She works out of Jane Addams Middle School. And Diana has a Jamba Juice gift certificate for each of the winners, the finalists, compliments of the Landale Elementary School District. And just from myself to Diana, just thank you so much, Diana, for just keeping things moving and working out all the details of the coloring contest. I know it was a lot of work, but you made it happen, and on behalf of City Landale, thank you.
Mike?
Mike? Don't forget Lenore's a driver as well. Lenore's back there. She's driven many years.
Oh, Lenore, didn't see Lenore. And Lenore Bemis, Youth Day Parade Committee member.
And Robert?
One note. Yes.
Next year will mark the seventieth anniversary of the parade. Started in nineteen fifty. Seventy years ago. That's a long time for a little hometown parade. So, do your artwork again next year. It'll be even more special.
All right. Thank you, guys, once again. These are fabulous. We really enjoy them. And thanks for the parents, too. Thanks to parents for bringing them out. Okay, let's move our agenda. We are now on our public safety report. Let's have our public safety report by lieutenant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report from March fourth through March seventeen. On March sixth at four thirty P M, deputies responded to the forty-two-hundred block of one fifty-third street regarding a possible mentally ill person armed with a wrench and yelling profanities. The informant told the deputies that she saw the male hitting parked vehicles in front of her residence. When the suspect saw the informant, he threw a wrench at the residence window, shattering it. The suspect then ran from the location and out of view. Deputies responded. They put out a crime broadcast. And assisting units were able to detain someone matching that, a male matching that description. The suspect was still yelling profanity at the deputies, and at this point, the deputies were able to take the suspect into custody. A field show-up was conducted by the victim, and she positively identified the person that we were detaining as a suspect who vandalized the window. He was placed under arrest for vandalism and booked at South Valley Station. Also, on the same morning, in the early, on the same day, March sixth, early morning hours, deputies responded to the Landale Service Center regarding a burglary and domestic assault report. The victim stated while she was sleeping, she was awakened when she heard her bedroom window opening. She saw her ex-boyfriend enter her residence through the window, and she screamed and told the suspect to leave. He refused, and then he began to assault her by punching her in the face. The suspect then pulled her off the bed onto the floor while she continued to scream and fight the suspect away. The suspect finally complied and fled the location. The suspect is a named suspect. It's her ex-boyfriend. Deputies searched the area but could not locate him at the time. However, he is named, he's identified, and there's an arrest pending. He's a resident of Los Angeles, the suspect. Also, this weekend is our thirty-fifth Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Relay. This is a relay that's a hundred-twenty miles race, starting from Baker, California, to Las Vegas, Nevada. Approximately three hundred teams, law enforcement teams from around the nation, participate in this race. We're gonna send, our South Valley Station's gonna send a team over there this weekend to compete in the station category. Last year, we finished thirteenth place in our category at a time of sixteen hours and thirty-seven minutes. So, we hope to beat that time. It's a good morale booster for the deputies there. Any questions I can have?
Are there any questions of the report?
No questions. Thank you for that activity.
All right, and good luck on the race.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's have items from the city clerk.
I have no new items this week.
Okay, thank you, madam. Okay, we're now on the oral communications. Oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body being the Landale City Council on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to the Landale City Council on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your turn. If you come to the podium and start with your name, if you would, at about two minutes, the amber light will come on and give you the sign to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Rundell. I live on Mansell Avenue. I noticed, I've been here before about the left turn line on Hawthorne Boulevard and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And I noticed in February that you guys had some temporary cameras set up. Is that, was that you guys that did that, obviously? There was cameras set up on poles? Huh?
Yeah, we'll speak, once everyone had opportunity to speak, we'll offer some replies.
Okay. Well, that's it. And just talking about your seventy anniversary. Next year, our church will be one hundred years in the city of Landale. Landale Christian Church Restoration Life Church. Right, Kathy? All right, thank you.
Congratulations, and happy anniversary.
Doris Hoffman, four-four-four-three West One, sixty-first Street, Landale, California, since nineteen fifty-two. That's a year or two, isn't it, Jim? Anyhow, I wish to thank the City Council, and I support them wholeheartedly on item they'll be looking at this evening, K fourteen. Sending a letter of opposition to somebody regarding Senate Bill S P forty. Yay.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Gary White, City of Landale. I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to speak. This last week in my neighborhood, I seen a well-organized crew come in there and tear up our street, put it back together with new pipes. And I would like to congratulate those guys. They just, they don't even talk to each other. They know what they gotta do. It's just a well-oiled machine. Some of those photos looks like one of the councilmen. Anyhow, would like to thank the council for some of these things that are going on in the city. 'Cause one of the codes, not codes, cultures I always believed in was continuous improvement. And I see that happening with this council, and I appreciate it. Thank, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, mayor.
Pen London, one-seventy-first. So, on my way here, I got to see a dog taking a crap and a kid not picking it up. Typical. Nice-looking dog, though. So, once upon a time, there was a kid walking his dog by, or the dog, by my house. Dog took a mess, and he didn't pick it up. So, of course, I started yelling at the kid, "Is that my dog? What are you doing with my dog? Give me my dog back. Bring me my dog." And the kid was just, like, really flustered, 'cause he didn't know how to respond. And I'm like, hey, you know, if I have to clean it up after, then obviously it's mine. He cleaned up. So, once upon a time, with all my complaints about dog feces, the city, and about dog licensing, the city paid to hire an extra animal control person, part-time, temporarily. So, I would like to say that I don't know how that did, what the outcome was, and whatever. But if we can pay for that, then I would like to suggest that we put some money towards, there's a company that apparently is being hired by a multitude of cities to help fight Airbnbs and other entities. Manhattan Beach has hired them, and I only know this because there was an article in the newspaper. So, I really wish y'all would put some money towards that to fight Airbnbs and help our code enforcement people, because they don't have time for everything under the sun, because there's only two people doing that job. So, last meeting, a young lady and her husband were talking about their hedges and having been sighted. You know, growing up, and I know I'm a lot older than some people, but if it was by railroad track or by an alley, you knew there was generally some iffy stuff going on. But regardless, in this day and age, we don't allow our children to be outside unsupervised when they're small. I don't care what size your hedge is, or your fence, or your whatever, it just isn't safe to leave your kids out by yourself, by themselves, when they're young. So, kudos to the City Council, wanting them to be able to keep their hedges. But, you know, where were you guys when I was complaining about my three-thousand-dollar parkway? And Frank's sitting there giving out sixty-dollar permits after mine was almost three hundred dollars in permits to the city. You know, it is astounding that a new person comes up and it's, oh, yes, oh, let's try and help them. But those of us, and when the city was threatening me with my dogs, threatening to come and remove my animals from my premises, because, oh, I don't know, I didn't wanna follow the June garbage that Landale had enacted? All y'all had to do was say, you know, leave Pullen Miles until we figure this out, but you did.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
West One Seventy Street. Last year around January, I went over to City Hall to apply for a permit to build a home on my property. Mr. Moore saw me coming in. I came in in uniform. I worked for the Sheriff's Department. Mr. Moore made a point to tell me that Sheriff's Department raised their rates, and he was happy about it, but that was fine. I told him I had nothing to do with it. He then told me that I couldn't build a regular apartment there, that I could build an A D U. But I had to qualify. I had to have visitor parking, and I said, I have that. So then, we went through the process. I paid my fees. I got the blueprints. There's a pad right there where he actually approved. It went through the county of Los Angeles. Mr. Moore, then I went to go visit him because I needed his advice. I had a problem with my neighbor fence. So, he had suggested I get a fence permit, thirty dollars. He said, better get it now, 'cause they're gonna be going up here pretty soon. I said, well, heck, I might as well get all my permits. And he said, don't worry about it. I'll take care of you. I want to get them right now. So, I said, all right. So then, a little ways down the road, he calls me up, and he says, hey, your neighbor turned you in. I said, what? He said, I need you to come in and talk to you. He said, my neighbor had turned me in. I said, is the neighbor right down the street? She goes, yeah. I go, I don't know. There'd been fighting that pad. Well, it turns out, they got it permitted. He had a two-car garage, and he went ahead and got a permit for it, and he, nice driveway. It's, you know, rightfully so. There's no parking on that street. The bottom line is, he called me, and he said, I'm gonna have to get a new fence permit. And the fence permits went up. I said, well, I already have one. He says, well, that ain't gonna work. He said, you need to get a new one. He said, Sheriff's Department's making us pay. Now, you're gonna have to pay. And I said, well, that ain't right. So, I just kinda ate it. I work for the Sheriff's Department. I can't be making a big stink. Last time I was here, I brought it to your guys' attention. I wanted to keep it on the down-low. He jumped up and said, Mr. Padilla does qualify. On the paperwork that I gave you, it shows that I do qualify. It shows that I have to, I need to have a parking permit, unless it's waived, which wasn't. Now, all I want is what's right. If you'd have told me right off the get, hey, you can't have any parking, I would not have built. Because on that street, there's no parking, absolutely none. Now, I'm stuck with the unit, and I have to rent my house out. I'm not gonna be able to do that. There's no parking. It's the right thing to do. It's right here. The county of Los Angeles approved it. He approved it. And then, all of a sudden, he calls me and tells me that code enforcement turned me in. Code enforcement never came to me. Why did they come to him? He told me that out of respect or whatever. That wasn't right, and the fact that he told me who turned me in wasn't right either. I mean, I work for the Sheriff's Department. There's no way I'm gonna walk over and beat on somebody, but it wasn't right. All I'm asking you both is, please help me out and do what's right. I hope you guys copy. If you can help me out, I would really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You have all the papers?
Yeah, you can give it. Thank you. Okay, it seems about all for oral communications. With that, we're gonna close oral communications and bring it back to the diocese for any comments from the council. Let's start with Mr. Reed.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for speaking. I appreciate that. Chuck, in regards to that Manhattan Boulevard project, yes, we did have some things going on and a study going on over there. We got a couple of intersections around the city that are being looked at, so we're working on that project actively. I'm not gonna go through all of these, so I can share some with my neighbors. Yeah, that one's on the agenda, so I won't talk about it just yet, but good. All right, moving on.
Ms. Pat Kearney.
Okay, like Dan said, I wanna thank all five of you for speaking tonight, and I'll touch on one. That's for Gary. I led that crew, so you're welcome on that street. And with that, I pass it on to my colleague to my right.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. We appreciate your presence and thank those of you who came up and spoke. They touched on a few of them, so I'm just gonna go straight to, I mean, we hear one side of, seems like there's an issue going on, so I don't know if maybe Sean can elaborate.
Yes, thank you, council, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Padilla, he's a resident, as he mentioned on his address. Was brought to our attention during, he has an A D U, so he has an accessory dwelling unit. It does not, we cannot require additional parking for our garage. So, we have, we've changed our A D U ordinance. As the council knows, you've adopted a new ordinance, revised ordinance last year. Under the old regulations, he was not, even current, he was not required to build a garage. We couldn't require a garage to be built. During the saturation of code enforcement and going down the street and dealing with parking pads, code enforcement officer contacted my department and asked me if there's a building permit for the A D U to confirm it, and that there was a parking pad that was on the property. So, staff did additional, Mr. Padilla's been here before. I think it was last year. We did some research into the matter, and it was carved out, I think, in two thousand, I don't have all the files in front of me, but it was like two thousand fourteen. I believe before the A D U was constructed. I showed the city manager and the city attorney's office that we've looked at it. We went through the historical, Google Earth, looked at all the requirements. And unfortunately, it doesn't comply. looked at all the requirements. And unfortunately, he doesn't comply. He doesn't meet the minimum requirements for our parking pad because he already has a two-car garage. So, generally speaking, in our two zoning, you get two units. You get, you have to have two-car garage built. This is an ADU, so we couldn't require additional parking. And he does not qualify for a parking pad, unfortunately.
Okay, sir. I'm sorry, but we can't have any comments from the audience.
Pursuant to our zoning code under the parking pad requirements, the council, many of you are on the commission or here. He doesn't qualify for a parking pad. The ADU doesn't allow for a parking pad. So, that's the issue. I don't know where it's at in code enforcement. If they're going after him on the code. We haven't done anything on the matter. That's, I don't know. It's in code enforcement, yes.
Okay. So, now it's with, I'm guessing, city attorney or not?
I think it's just code enforcement.
Okay. Code enforcement, okay. And then, I just wanted to, some of these, we will, Mrs. Hoffman, we will get to the letter of opposition. And thank you to everybody else who came out tonight, and I'll just pass it along. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Osborne.
Well, you guys covered most of it, but Chuck was mentioning the 100th anniversary of the church, and that is notable. Sarah Jones founded the church 100 years ago. And she lived right up the street here. Her brother, who lived in town, was a Civil War veteran. Believe that, believe or not, we had a Civil War veteran living in town at one time, a long time ago. And, let's see, city manager or city attorney, anything you want to add to what we're hearing from Sean regarding the last discussed item?
It's not on the agenda, so we shouldn't really talk much more about it. But I mean, I think he covered it.
He's covered it?
As far as I understand.
Just giving you the opportunity. Is there anything you would have had in?
No. I mean, all I wanna say is that I know other cities are getting in trouble with HCD if they're requiring parking for ADUs because HCD wants to make ADUs as easy as possible. So, even if we have that in our code, we would have to be changing our code.
Okay. And thank you, Doris, for the encouraging words. We'll soon be to that item. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Yeah. Speaking of this, Ms. London spoke about the Airbnb app or some organization or what have you. I'm not familiar with it, but I'd like to take a look at it and see what they are, similar organization may have to offer to the city. Okay. So, maybe we'll take a look at that. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Mr. White, thank you for the kind words you had to say about the city and recognize how we're working for the betterment of the community. And we appreciate that. And you're right. They actually, the construction company did a great job on Condon. You know, we both live in that area. They did a great job on that project over there. The Manhattan Beach Boulevard, like, I think we did say that we were doing, taking a look at the lights over there. Because when you do travel, and I mentioned this maybe two years ago, and the wheels of government doesn't turn as fast as we would like them to turn, but they do turn. If you go from Manhattan Beach Boulevard going east to Hawthorne and you turn left, which is going north, it's impossible because you're always gonna get someone that doesn't realize how it works. That you're supposed to go all the way up and then clear it. Even though it's red, you turn left, you know, to clear that intersection because it's a strange intersection. And so, you're sitting there and sometime it takes you one or two light cycles because you got some person that's standing right behind the double lane and got all this room to move up, but they don't know they're supposed to move up. And so, you honking your horn gently, you know, because it's rush hour and only to be frustrated when they don't get why you hunking the horn because they're looking at you in their mirror like, "What's your problem?" You know? And you're asking them, "Move up, move up." And so, I'm hoping that this new lighting, when we get that taken care of, we kind of clarify, you know, that, how the traffic pattern should work in that area. Maybe traffic will run a little smoother during rush hours in that area. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Oh, I'm not gonna ask him that.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make one comment on the Airbnb thing? I'm not familiar with what Ms. London mentioned, but I wanted to let everyone know that there was a decision last week by the Court of Appeal on a case challenging the City of Santa Monica's Airbnb ordinance that we've, that staff has been monitoring. And it upheld their ordinance, which is a little more tight than ours. For one thing, it requires Airbnb to give the city a periodic list of all the properties in the city that are on it. And then, the city has more it can do if it finds a home being rented that's not on that list. So, we're gonna be working on an ordinance for the council to add those extra steps in.
And we can look at Santa Monica as a kind of model ordinance. Very good.
Since now we know that it's been tested and upheld.
Yes. Okay. Okay. So, that's all I have. And with that, we'll close public comments and oral communications. We remove the agenda. We're now on our consent calendar. Items number two through nine. What is the pleasure of this body concerned, a consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion's been made by Reed that we approved the consent calendar and seconded by Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Without any further discussion, the council, please vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay. Item number 10, under administration, concern the change order.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a request for council to approve a change order for the Bruin House across the street. As you know, we approved the demolition of that, which is in compliance with mitigation measures for the community center. Since approval, we've had a couple of change orders. One is to change the asphalt parking lot to concrete for a longer lifespan, not to have the maintenance issues in the future, to install a rolling gate to prevent overnight parking in the lot, and various curb additions because of the gate. And we did some additional tree cutting and pruning around the property. We had a second change order for some additional striping for a handicap parking space and also for a catch basin along the south side of the property that was required. The total change order is $21,885, and it would come from the bond funds, which is included in the project costs. And that concludes my summary.
Any questions? I do have a quick question. Was there, we didn't anticipate these changes prior to?
No. When it was done originally, it was a very simplistic plan to get it going. And then, with the change from interim directors to our last interim director and a sit-down with staff, we discussed what was really the best approach to do this for the longevity of the improvements, so we're not having maintenance issues in the future.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Is there any questions? Any other questions?
I have one. Are they on time to finish on time?
Yes. They're moving very quickly. As you see, the building is done. They've started building the block wall. And I know our neighbor's in the audience, and I think things are going okay. Because she lets me know if they're not.
Well, I know Friday.
Which I appreciate.
I know Friday, they only had one guy doing the brick wall. That's why I don't know if they're gonna finish on time.
I can get an update tomorrow. Our director, who's a contractor, is not here tonight, but I'll get an update tomorrow on the timeline.
Yeah. And they seem to be moving pretty rapidly.
They have been, but I'll check.
Is there any further discussion on item number 10? If not, what is the pleasure of this body concerned, item number 10?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. So, the motion's been made by our Pullman Miles that we approve the change order and seconded by Councilwoman Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion or any further debate? CNN, with the council, please vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 11, professional service agreement.
Yes. This item is a request for the council to approve the contract for construction inspection services for our Inglewood Avenue improvements. As you know, we recently approved the funding to begin the improvements of Inglewood Avenue from Rosecrans going down to 153rd Street. We do have an in-house inspector, but this size of project is gonna require much more work and more time than our in-house person can afford, which would then neglect other projects in the city. We did solicit bids. We had two responsible proposals, one from Merrell CM Consultants, one from KOA Corporation. The Merrell proposal was at $135,800. After adjusting that to remove some closeout requirements and reports that were not needed and also not part of the KOA proposal, the Merrell proposal came in at $104,700. So, they were the low bidder. As such, we're recommending approval for the contract with the Merrell Corporation. The total would be $125,700 with a contingency, which would be needed in case there's any additional inspection services needed in the project. And those funds are included in the Measure C and bond proceeds. There's no general funds required for this. And so, the request is approved to approve this contract with Merrell MC for our construction services.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion or question?
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Okay. There's a motion to accept the staff recommendation by Kearney.
I'll second it.
And seconded by council member Daniel Reed. Will the council, please vote? If there's no further discussions.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay. Item number 12, award of contract.
Yes. We have another public works item. This one goes back about 20 years. Back in December of 1998, when the city removed its fueling station at the Public Works Yard, there was soils testing. At that time, there were some trace elements of contamination in the soil, but for whatever reason, the county water quality control board did not follow up on this. There was no requirements at the time to mitigate anything. We recently received a letter asking to do another soil sample out there to see what the ground conditions are. As such, we do need to secure the services of a qualified firm, which we have solicit proposals for. The firm in question is Geotactical Engineering. We're looking at a cost of $11,981. And we also include a contingency in case there's any additional services they need to do once they get into the project. The total request is for $14,377. The funding request is from our UDAG money, which is general fund. But as we agreed on several months ago, that any UDAG use would become, would come to the council before it was spent. So, that would be an appropriate use of this one-time service. And from here, we would find out if we need to do anything further with the water quality control board. So, the request is to approve $14,377 from UDAG to fund this consultant and award the contract to Nino Moore.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Is there any questions of the proposal?
I have a question. How come after 21 years, they decide to come out and say, "Touch the soil"? Is there statute of limitations on that?
Probably not. We thought it was very odd ourselves. We don't know the real, we don't know the reason, other than they were going through files and something came up and we got this letter. So, we need to do it. It's a very good question. We just don't have an answer.
Well, I was just gonna suggest because it's the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and that's all you need to know. That's how they operate. You never know when something is closed.
They probably just changed their rules on how these underground storage tanks from fuel stations need to be abandoned. And so, they're making people who did them differently go back and check things. But it's not anything specific to us.
Nothing we did. No.
Okay. So, what is the pleasure of this body concerned, item number 12?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion's been made by Kearney.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the council, please vote? I always have to hit it twice.
Motion approved unanimously.
I'll just add quickly, too, with the use of this money, that leaves a balance of $223,000 in the UDAG fund for future one-time uses for whatever council should decide in the future.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Item number 13, appointments of a voting delegate to SCAG.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, council members, this is the annual SCAG General Assembly that's gonna take place from Wednesday, May 1st to Friday, May 3rd. Each year, we select a voting delegate and typically an alternate to attend the SCAG General Assembly. And of course, any and all of you are welcome to attend this. We do have funding available in the city council's travel and in meetings budget. So, the request before you tonight is to pick a voting delegate, an alternate if you wish. And if there's anyone else who wishes to attend, please let us know, and then we will make reservations and register.
SCAG pays for the room.
They pay for one person. Yeah. And then, but the balance, we have funding within the budget. It is budgeted. We can use that if you wish to go to. So, just, we need to know the voting delegate, alternate, and if anyone else wishes to go, and we'll take care of it.
So, if SCAG is paying for one room, that means if we have the voting delegate, more than the voting delegate, so two or three people will be staying with that voting delegate.
That's right. They have cots.
Yeah. I'm just letting James know that.
Put a sleeping bag out in the hall. I serve on SCAG board, so they pay for mine automatically.
I think it's four to a room.
As I said, bring a sleeping bag and stay out in the hall. I won't turn you in. Yeah, I'll be there anyway, but you're all welcome to go.
So, is that separate from the voting delegate?
I was last year, unless you wanna be at this year if you're going.
No, I don't wanna be. I'm just trying to give clarity.
I did it last year, but.
You did very well, so I'd like to see you do it again.
I'm fine doing it.
And then, we need an alternate.
It's up to you guys who you wanna be.
I could tentatively do it, but I'd have to confirm. So, I don't know if we can, if nobody else wants to.
But if he ends up going, then you don't have to go. And if you, but you still can go. Okay. Sound like we have, I might be an alternate.
Yeah. I can confirm. So, maybe we can put it on and then I can confirm soon to make sure.
So, we have, so we have a voting delegate, Osborne, and a tentative alternate.
Yeah. I think that's fine to have two alternates designated, a first and second choice, so we know if.
That's only two. That's only one alternate.
Were you, you were gonna?
No, I'm not gonna be an alternate.
Oh, okay.
He'll be the voting delegate.
Gonna be the alternate?
Okay.
I'll be second alternative if she can go.
There you go.
All right.
I'd be an alternate.
An alternate.
So, now we have two, two alternates, Suarez and Kearney. And one tentative, tentative alternative.
And who wishes to attend this year? We have Councilman Osborne, Suarez, Lee. Is anyone else deciding to go so we can make plans?
Well, one of the two, Will.
One of the two is, I'm not, no. Brad is going on now. Need to go. If she can go, she can go.
So, just make reservations for one. Because one of the two.
All right. We'll take care of that.
That was easy.
Yeah, that was real easy. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item J is, no, city manager's report.
You're right. No, I'll do it.
City manager. We'll make up something for you. Go ahead.
I think, I think Councilman Osborne wants to present this. Okay.
Go ahead, city manager. We're on item J. That's you, right? Yeah, city manager. You're still the city manager, right?
Yeah.
Okay, come on.
Well, at the request of Councilmember Osborne, I've prepared this item for the agenda. And this is a request for the city council to consider a letter of opposition to Senate Bill 50.
Oh, wait a minute. Let me make sure I'm following this correctly. I thought you was gonna have your regular city manager's item.
Oh.
And then, K, you're gonna have item number 14.
I will take K. You will take J.
Yeah. So, go ahead with your regular city manager.
Sorry about that. I was looking at the reports and I was skipping over that. I, the only thing I was gonna mention tonight, I was gonna introduce our new finance director, Marla Pendleton. But Marla is out today. She will be back tomorrow. At the next council meeting, I'll give an introduction for her. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, with item 14.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I requested this item. I serve on the COG board, and so, we're very well, we're well aware of legislative items that come before that body. And also, our neighboring city to the north took action on this item. This is Senate Bill 50 by Senator Weiner and appropriately named, I'd say. Here's the article in the LA Times, if you haven't seen it. This, as I see it, is just another attempt by the state government and the legislature to usurp local control. And there's a purpose for local control, so that the residents can elect their own council, their representatives. And then, therefore, they can appoint citizens from the community to serve on the planning commission. But all this does, and what the state's doing, is taking away that power that the local people have. It's taking away your power and your control. And it always seems to come from the Bay Area. And sadly, this is backed by our local representatives as well. They just go along to get along, the way I see it. So, this is so negative in the sense of the impact it can have on the communities. Endless. What they're pushing is density, and they want more and more housing. They say, "Oh, we have a housing crisis." Well, that may be the case, but there's powers that be in government and in private industry. Of course, they want the population to continue to increase in California. But the result, as you've seen, you have no parking in your community, your roads are clogged, and then, extra services are required with all the new housing units. Sewers are taxed, electricity grid is taxed, on and on. There seems to be no end to it. What this does is takes away local control, so our planning department, our planning commission, can't regulate sizes of lots. Anybody that has a problem with parking or. Anybody that has a problem with parking, or all those affected issues of congestion, this is the type of thing you got to keep an eye on. But, the public is largely ignorant of this sort of thing. The state just greenlights it all the time. So, what I'm asking is my colleagues to adopt a letter of resolution, similar to what City of Hawthorne's done. You know, if enough cities keep fighting back on this kind of thing, at least we can make our voice heard. They're probably still going to do whatever they're going to do, but that's essentially it. So, I thank staff for preparing this and putting it on, and, uh, I guess they can answer any questions.
Okay, so what, what is, is there more discussion, any, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this, this item? Or you can make a comment, whatever you want to do.
No.
I mean, I, I, I'm of similar, uh, mindset. I agree, it's something that, uh, it's, it seems like they're really focusing, the governor's really focusing on it this year, so it's, it's one of the many to come, I believe. So, I think it's now, it's time for us to kind of push back, and hopefully, if enough[1480.76]